Recording in progress.
Here by call to order the Roseville City Council meeting for Monday, September 11th, 2023. Mr. City Manager, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Strawn?
Here.
Councilmember Atten?
Present.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Here.
Councilmember Graff?
Here.
Mayor Rowe?
Here.
And with us at the dais, we have our city attorney, Rachel Tierney, who's on my right at the far end. We also have, as I mentioned before, our city manager, Pat Trudgeon, who's on the other end of the dais. We also have staff, department heads, and guests who may be participating in the meeting as various items come up on the agenda. We would ask folks if you have a cellphone to make sure and silence it, or otherwise assure that it doesn't disrupt the meeting. Do we have any remote participants this evening, Mr. Trudgeon?
We've none signed up before the meeting, but let me just check in. None online right
None online right now, so we can forego the instructions for the online participants. Did the cellphone, so with that, we'll ask folks to stand if you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
It's a new one, huh?
It's a new one.
That's okay.
All right, then, next on our agenda is consideration of approving the agenda, and I'll check as I always do with staff first. Are there any changes that need to be made to tonight's agenda?
Mr. Mayor, staff has no changes to the agenda.
All right, and are there any council requests for changes to the agenda or items the council members would like removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration this evening? Not seeing any. We'll double-check with folks in the audience. So there's a section of our agenda at the bottom of page one that carries over a little bit onto page two. It's section 10 of our agenda, and it's called the Consent Agenda. It's a number of items that we normally take up with a single motion and not a lot of discussion or opportunity for public comment, and it is at the end of the meeting. If anybody is here this evening for an item on that section of the agenda, section 10 once again, who wishes to either make a comment or ask a question, this would be an opportunity to let us know, and we can take up that item earlier in the meeting so that you have a chance to make your comment or ask your question without having to wait to the end. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak to an item on section 10 of our agenda, the consent agenda, this evening? I'm not seeing anybody grab my attention here. With that, then, an appropriate motion would be to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Schroeder, seconded by Councilmember Atten to approve the agenda as presented. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post? That passes unanimously. We have our agenda for this evening. Next on the agenda is general public comment. This is a chance for folks in the public to speak to items that are not on this evening's agenda, but may be of interest to people in the community or related to city business, but once again, not something that we're taking up this evening on our agenda. Is there anyone here this evening who wishes to speak for a non-agenda item during general public comment this evening? All right, seeing none, then we'll proceed with the agenda, and there will be an opportunity for members of the public to speak as agenda items do come up. That then brings us to right into our business items. We don't have any recognitions or donations or items removed from consent this evening. Our first item under business items is to hold a public hearing to consider approving a liquor license for Shinwa Korean Steakhouse, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Trudgeon to introduce that item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Tonight, we're here, as mentioned, to have a public hearing to consider approving a liquor license for Shinwa Korean Steakhouse. It should be located at 2181 Sterling Avenue. We do require a public hearing for this. They're asking for an on-sale wine and three-two beer license. We have received the application material and the background check, and this is, looks all good to go here, so we're asking for the council to hold a public hearing and consider approving this liquor license. I have had this question asked a lot, when it's going to open. We don't know. At some point in the fall, they're making steady progress on their building, but I think they hope to open in the fall. So with that, I'll be quiet. After seeing questions you have, be happy to answer them. Otherwise, it is a public hearing.
All right, thank you, Mr. Trudgeon. And just to clarify, they are not seeking an outdoor endorsement to their license?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, are there questions from the council for staff on this requested license? Questions? All right. This is a public hearing, so we'll open it up for public comment. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak either in support of or opposition to the granting of the requested liquor license for the Shinwa Korean Steakhouse this evening? Anyone from the public who wishes to speak to this license request? Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and move to council consideration. We've got the request before us, as well as a copy of the application materials. Is there a motion from the council? Councilmember Atten?
Move approval.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Atten, seconded by Councilmember Graff. Discussion on the motion. Is the maker of the motion, Councilmember Atten?
No.
Secured there, Councilmember Graff. Is there any other discussion from council members?
Just like to wish them well and hope we see thriving business in that location.
All right, we hope to never see them back before us for compliance check violations at any point in the future while they have their license with the city. With that, we've got the motion before us to approve the license as requested. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post? That passes unanimously, and that license is approved, and we do wish them well in their endeavor. Next then is item 7B, which is to have a discussion related to regulation of the use of cannabis and hemp products in public places. This is a return to a discussion that we began with three members, I believe, of the council at a previous meeting, and the feeling at that time was to bring it back for a full council discussion. A number of issues were raised and probably need to be further worked through, and so that's why it's back before us. I'll turn it over to Mr. Trudgeon once again to introduce this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the introduction. As mentioned, we did talk about this in August 7th, in looking and trying to define what was allowed for the use of cannabis in public places. The first and foremost question that the council spent a lot of time is what is a public place and how expansive or restrictive we want to be on that. The ordinance proposed in front of you in August was pretty expansive, and I think there was a general consensus of those members present that that should be worked on and tightened up a little bit. So we are bringing this back, not for actual consideration of an ordinance tonight, but just to have some more discussion with the full council and get your input on this and what we would like to do regarding restricting the use of cannabis in public, if at all. So in the RCA, there is some options. The city attorney has come up with some language, and she can certainly speak to that, and those are just a couple of examples. There's probably other examples, too, but can help frame it anywhere from just public spaces owned by the city government or any governmental unit, or get really specific, talk about just parks and maybe parking lots in there. You can also have restriction on locations as far as how far away from an entrance might be an opportunity to have some conversation about. So all those are really up for conversation, but we're hoping to get some feedback and direction from the council, and then we'll draft the ordinance accordingly. Couple, two other things I would mention before I'll maybe have the city attorney weigh in is, one of the things that kind of got intermingled in the conversation was smoking tobacco, specifically in parks, but also just more generally, and obviously, the Indoor Clean Air Act covers a lot of that currently. But the question was about, was about city parks, and in the packet, thanks to Parks and Rec Director Matt Johnson, he came up with some information from other cities and what they do on a variety of topics, tobacco, cannabis, as well as liquor, to help guide us. Right now, we don't have an ordinance that prohibits smoking in parks. We have a policy around the uses in the park, especially with kids, that we discourage it, and I don't, I would say that we haven't had a huge problem with that, but that's something that is just a policy and not an ordinance. So I think as we look at where we would allow or prohibit the use of cannabis, the tobacco conversation should be part of that one way or another. So there's that. And then finally, this might be a really good opportunity for staff to work on the city's racial equity toolkit to really help kind of identify some issues. As you have seen maybe in St. Paul and other places, there's conversations around public use of cannabis and as an equity issue, especially for people living in multifamily units, there is not opportunities for them to perhaps use cannabis in their place like a single-family homeowner would, for example. So that's some, some consideration needs to be considered. As part of that racial equity toolkit, we'll look at the impact to the population, but also try to get some community input as well. So it is a process. It's not something we can bring back in a week. It will take some time to go through. So, so we bring that forward as a consideration and ask for some city council feedback and direction on that as well. So with that, I'll pause and see if city attorney Tierney has any other follow-up comments from my introductory ones.
I don't think I have any follow-up comments. I'm happy to answer any questions. In the staff report, there's a few different examples of language that other jurisdictions have used. So if, but, but I, that doesn't mean that those are the only options. There may be other things that you want, and, you know, the limitations in state law will be in the ordinance. In the state law, there were, I think, three places that cannot be considered a public place by city code, but anything else theoretically that falls under the umbrella of public ten. And also, the restriction is limited to violation being a petty misdemeanor. It can't be a misdemeanor, but a petty misdemeanor will make it.
Thank you. And I did want to note also that the city does have an ordinance that does prohibit the consumption of alcohol in city parks, and so that is something that's also a part of the equation if we're thinking about controlled substance use. And so just want to make sure that's sort of part of our conversation as well. That was definitely a part of our earlier conversation, is how do we, how do we look at sort of the type of product and the impact and how that relates to how it might be regulated. So that's, that's a factor as well. So certainly, if there are questions from the council or thoughts as to how we might want to proceed, we'll open it up for that. And I know I tended to kind of dominate the first conversation, so I'll sit, I'll sit back a little bit more. Thoughts from the council? Councilmember Atten?
I wasn't here, so I'm going to jump in right away. I think the racial equity toolkit is a really good idea. I also think I would prefer to pass something now for some certain areas that we might come to common agreement on for now, and then engage the public over a larger period of time rather than leaving several months of continued gray area. For me, when I looked at, at this language, the piece that I'm glomming onto are city parks and the city hall campus, the broader campus that we are sitting in, as areas that have much more frequent family use and other things of that. One of the specific areas targeted in the state language is around, is not having it around youth, and I think that it's hard to separate. Maybe you could say we don't have a lot of youth hanging out at the maintenance facility, but we do have kids invited to the fire station. We have kids who come here, and certainly Oval literally has hundreds of youth coming to it morning, noon, and night throughout the year. So, so I would be looking at something along the lines of that. Third bullet point as a starting point, all city parks, but I would put a comma, parking lots adjacent to parks and trails within city parks, and on the main city hall campus, including city hall, fire station, maintenance facility, and skating center, and adjacent parking lots. For me, these are areas that we know we have lots of kids. It fits with the language of the state statute, gives room for now for other considerations in the future, but targets these high-youth areas and high-public-use areas.
All right, other thoughts, Councilmember Strawn?
I concur with much of what Councilmember Atten mentioned. That's similar to my feelings on this at this point. Obviously, things may be subject to change with clarification based on the state, but I would like to make sure that we add all smoked products into that, not just cannabis. And we would include tobacco, just so that it's not a matter of distinction on someone's part determining now what is it that you are smoking.
What are you vaping right now?
Right, so that all those products. I see that there was language about ingestion. I don't know that that's even enforceable, and I don't know that that's applicable in this situation. I feel more strongly about the smoked product because it's going to be something that's going to impact the people surrounding it. They're going to have to smell it. If you have a bag of gummies, it doesn't impact me in any way, but if you are smoking and it's the smell, I'm allergic to it, or it's objectionable to me, then I have a different reaction.
All right, other thoughts, Councilmember Graff?
I would agree with those comments, and I am very interested in the racial toolkit because this, this law was brought up because of inequality and racial issues. So I want to be very careful that what we're doing is not, I guess, backwards in that sense. And I still would like to know from the police department how this is going to be enforced and how that's going to be handled. Like the attorney said, it's a petty misdemeanor, so that isn't going to stop some from their job or something like that. I mean, that was what, what it was used for in the past, where people actually went down the road, where they lost, where they couldn't live, and everything else.
That's right. Councilmember Schroeder?
I would agree with what everyone's talking about. I have been walking through the park and a couple of times watched people sitting on the bench with their flowered cannabis out there getting ready to smoke it as children walked by. So, I mean, I'm seeing that already, so I would like to see us do something to prevent that. I do like the idea about putting the tobacco in, but I also consider this to be very similar to alcohol, as in what it does to you. So I guess I'd want to make sure that if we're prohibiting alcohol as well, you know, we should be prohibiting cannabis, so use in the, in the parks or wherever. So I, I think there's, there's a line where, I mean, yes, you do can smoke it, but then it's also, you know, you get intoxicated from it as well, so it's similar to alcohol. So I, I would definitely want to put something in place, and then I, I think we need to have ongoing conversations about fine-tuning it, but I think we do need to have something to start with. And, yeah, it's, it's kind of a work in the process, is what I think.
And so I think it sounds like the, the notion is to put something in place as it relates specifically to the areas that Councilmember Atten outlined, and then as we're having the broader conversation and bringing in the racial equity toolkit, that might be towards the notion of potentially expanding where the prohibition might apply beyond what we've listed there. Is that kind of the idea?
Potentially, yeah.
Or potentially, as a result of that, contracting what we've already restricted. In other words, providing more places where people could potentially use the products, depending on what comes back in the, in that process, but at least have, have what we've discussed as a starting point. The other part of the draft ordinance was a lot of technical changes to our existing controlled substance ordinance, which I think need to happen anyway. So perhaps we can have, you know, that at least come back for sure as soon as possible. Conceivably, I suppose we could, you know, cross off everything else on the draft ordinance that's with us and, and pass that if we wanted to this evening. I'm not sure that's where the council wants to go, but conceivably that could be done. Although I did think that Councilmember Schroeder did bring up some questions about that at the last meeting, and I don't believe any changes have been made to the draft since then, so we may want to have that come back as well. And then, you know, I think we want to talk about where we handle this in the code. Right now, our alcohol prohibition is strictly in the discussion of parks, and that's the only place that we have a prohibition on the use of alcohol. This is a little broader than that, so I don't know that we would put that in the same section of the ordinance, but then I start to wonder, do we need to, if we're starting to talk about treating, you know, similar products similar ways, do we need to think about, do we pull, you know, do we want to also look at restricting alcohol consumption in some of those same areas? And once again, that gets to their sort of two different purposes for, you know, one with the smoking and vaping is clearly related to similar issues with tobacco smoking, which is the, the nuisance to people around you, the potential for secondhand smoke, and all those types of things, obviously, around children. And then, you know, as we mentioned in our last discussion, the restriction, I believe, on use of alcohol in parks is related to what alcohol can do to people and what that can mean in terms of people interacting with each other and what issues that can cause in parks. And I, you know, I want to make sure that, that to the extent those types of issues can arise through the use of cannabis, that that's all being taken into account as well. And if we want to expand that prohibition on alcohol to places outside of just specifically the parks, I don't know if we want to go there, but I wanted to, once again, raise that question. Councilmember Strawn?
I feel like it's two different issues, not because they're different, but because I think it taking, biting it all off and one feels really large, and it doesn't give us a chance to make all the consideration. It's also not something that we shared, that that was a possibility. So there may be people in the public or that have an opinion that, you know, would, would want to be voicing that as we drafted something. But I do think because kind of time is of the essence with the new law going into place, I would be inclined to at least put, it seems like we're all of similar mind as far as what we would be, want to do right now in regards to cannabis and potentially smoking, but to move forward with that, but to really rethink as we continue our discussions, but really think alcohol, because I, I don't think it's a bad idea, and I think it's, would be good to have it in code rather than just in the parks path, you know, but makes it easier for everyone if there's a consistent application.
And it is in the code. It is a law, as applies to parks, as far as the consumption.
As, yeah.
So, but it doesn't apply any broader than, than parks.
Right, and I don't know that there's a need to, but I think there's an opportunity for us to review and just evaluate, make sure that's appropriate.
Councilmember Atten?
For the short term, are there, in, short term, are there any of the areas I mentioned that alcohol use is allowed, except by permit, like when?
By permit.
Something happens at, at the Oval or skating center, right?
Right.
Otherwise, it's not allowed in these spaces anyway.
Can somebody consume alcohol in the city hall parking lot?
In their car?
I don't know if we have a specific prohibition against that.
I don't think we do.
Yeah.
Based on what we looked at in the prior discussion.
In the park buildings?
I think it's, it's, it's prohibited in parks. So if it's a park building, it's in a park, so it's prohibited.
But you can't use it at the skating center without a permit, for example.
I think that's considered a park.
So, so, so for a special event like tap-in and cork, we get a temporary liquor license. Somebody's having a wedding reception, the caterer's license allows them to serve alcohol.
Okay.
So you and I couldn't just walk in there and decide to open a drink?
Pop the top, yeah.
Pop the top, and, and without any other permission, I guess, is the way to say it.
And Cedar Home has its own arrangements?
Yes, it does.
And as far as like on the golf course, I believe that's considered a park property, and so you can't consume alcohol on the golf course itself. I'm getting a nod from our Parks and Rec Director.
Yep, thank you, Matt.
If I could, Councilmember Atten, could you repeat what the language you said, just, just so we're all clear, make sure we're...
I would note that I, I agree with Councilmember Strawn's point of all smoking and vaping, right, that that's our category for now that, that we would address. So it would say all city parks, comma, parking lots adjacent to city parks, and trails within city parks. You have a comma, and on the main city campus, including city hall, fire station, maintenance facility, skating center, and oval, and adjacent parking lots.
License center? Do what you want.
That would cover...
Because that, once we get to license center, now we're talking about commercial properties.
Right.
It's a new discussion. I think that I would wait for the racial equity toolkit to have that discussion.
Because that property is owned by the city, but it's not designated as a park.
Well, it's certainly not likely to be used, other than potentially if we run programs in any of our space there.
We do, which we do.
Yep, and there are children there.
Yeah.
Oh, well, then, yeah. And the license center is strip mall.
Yeah.
And parking lot. Thanks.
I guess there's really no reason you'd want to smoke cannabis at the license center, I guess, so why not make it clear that...
I waited over an hour.
There's so many jokes we made. I mean, they're all on the table right now.
Yeah, and I was just trying to think if there's anything else, and maybe Mr. Johnson has some feedback on maybe something we missed.
Yeah, I think, thank you, Mayor and council. The only thing I want to chime in with more, it's a little more complicated than a thumbs up on, on Cedar Home and the golf course. We've not done sales out on the course, which many other communities do. I wouldn't say that we've had a specific prohibition on somebody who may buy a drink inside and then take it onto the course with them in the sense that we're not actively attempting to prevent that. And I would caution that I think if we do, we would be out of step with what virtually every golf course does. So I think golf course might be a different conversation, or one that would at least take some more analysis on our side. So when I gave you the thumbs up that was related to sales, we haven't done the alcohol cart thing or anything like that, but it might have some adverse impacts even related to enforcement ability if we were to include the, the golf course in that, so.
You're talking about drinking alcohol.
Right. Correct.
But we're only going to talk about smoking.
What about smoking cigarettes? Do you allow that on the course?
Uh, well, yes, because right now with the policy that we have only states that where youth programs are being undertaken, and as city manager Trudgeon mentioned, that's a Parks and Recreation policy, so we would not allow it when youth lessons are occurring. But if somebody is out there on their own, yes, we have allowed that. Just, just same as any other park right now.
It's no different than any other park.
Right.
I, I wouldn't change my language, partially because it's almost, we're almost done with that season, and as we get in this more robustly, we can have that for the conversation.
Yeah, I just wanted...
I don't, I, that doesn't change my mind.
Well, and I don't know that the, the reason I brought it up, too, is I don't know that the city's specific park-related ordinance related to the consumption of alcohol carves out any exception for the golf course. And so if somebody brought their own and was consuming on the golf course, and I assume somebody noticed it and reported it, potentially they could be cited.
Correct. I just wanted to make sure I didn't give you bad information with the thumbs up nod.
Yep, I appreciate that.
Thanks.
Right, and so we're not, at this point, talking about changing our existing ordinance related to the alcohol consumption.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, but I mean, so that's how it would sort of interact as it is now. So that's good to know. So do staff feel that they've got guidance to bring something back?
I think so. I'll look to the attorney for, she'll be the one drafting, but I think it was, we were pretty...
Probably not at the next meeting, though.
Might be a couple. That's okay.
September 28th? Whatever it is. Was it the 24th? I don't look into math.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll see what we can put together on that, but I think, I think the direction is very clear. I appreciate the specificity of it, so.
And then also putting in the changes that they thought about.
Yep, from the last time.
Yep, make sure we catch up on all those on the technical side of it.
Excellent.
Okay.
And then I, I also heard direction to start working on the racial equity toolkit and go through that process.
Yes.
So we'll dig into that as well.
All right, good. Good discussion. Hopefully through, through, we haven't heard a lot from the public necessarily so far, but as this gets more and more publicized, hopefully we'll have many more opportunities for people to weigh in, certainly before the 25th. But once again, we're going to have a broader process as well, so. All right, next on our agenda then is to consider approval of an ordinance to amend chapter 302, the liquor license, related to some of the penalties, and I'll turn it back over to Mr. Trudgeon for that.
Thank you. This item was brought forward, I think originally by Councilmember Atten back in February as we were dealing with some violations about looking at the penalties for, specifically for off-sale liquor license and first-time violators. After some additional discussion at the July 10th meeting, the council directed staff to bring back an ordinance increasing the financial penalty for the first-time violator from $1,000 to $2,000, which is the maximum. So this ordinance does change that penalty from 1,000 to 2,000. I also took the liberty, and certainly the council can weigh in on this, to also change the penalty for the first-time violator for on-sale from 1,000 to 2,000, more for consistency's sake than anything else, but certainly we can have a conversation if you want to treat them differently. Would also, let me see if I can pull it up here. So you see the tables here. So this is what the ordinance looks like. So the off-sale, changing the 1 to 2, fairly straightforward, and keeping the zero-day suspension in recognition of the off-sale. That's all they do. Did not change the other penalties for the sale of a beverage to an obviously intoxicated person, refusal to allow city inspectors, and so on and so forth. Those are still 1,000, so that's an additional consideration you may want to make. This ordinance just changes the off-sale first violation to 2,000, and then for the on-sale from 1,000 to 2,000 as well. So we do treat them differently under the law, but these are, get some consistency, at least with what we're charging for sale for persons under 21. So as I said, there's other things we can consider there for the different penalty amounts for the other violations, and I'll leave that for the council to discuss. But otherwise, the ordinance is pretty straightforward. We have this ordinance, and we have an ordinance summary as well for the city council to consider.
All right, thank you, Mr. Trudgeon. I'll maybe turn it over to Councilmember Atten as the sort of initiator of this, for some initial thoughts and, and any suggested changes if there are any.
Well, the reason I brought this up, as noted, is the difference in the impact, I mean, understanding that it's different to have an off-sale situation than on-sale, but also the difference in impact. Essentially, off-sale folks are more impacted by suspension, but they had a low violation amount of 1,000 and then no other penalty versus the on-sale that had the 1,000 and a one-day suspension of alcohol. We tend to target Fridays and Saturday nights, right? So it was certainly something that was an additional financial penalty. I have no problem with them both being 2,000. I just felt that 1,000 was not enough, and we continue to have a fair number of these violations, and so I feel like we need to send a different message, and this is the maximum that's allowed by state statute, and maybe we need to say, hey, let's look at that, team. But, but, so I'm okay with this. The goal is sending the message.
Other thoughts from councilmembers? Councilmember Graff?
Well, just a question, because then if the off-sale is doing the 2,000 and zero-day suspension, and the on-sale is doing the 2,000 penalty and one day... and the on-sale is doing the two thousand penalty and one day, so they're still having a higher.
I, I concur. Part of my problem was, or my concern was that the off-sale was so low and so minor compared. So, yeah, they are still different, um, but at least it's not what feels like a, a small penalty for what continues to be a problem for, uh, some of our establishments.
Unfortunately.
Yeah.
And certainly the notion of doing a suspension even of one day for, for a first violation for an off-sale. Liquor stores seem to be a little, little too much at when the original penalty scheme was drafted.
Yes.
Uh, and so, or actually, I think it was, there was a one-day suspension initially, and then we did as a council back off of that after a couple of rounds of enforcement and realizing what that, what that impact is. It's a lot more than a thousand dollars to us, to some, you know, liquor stores for a one-day suspension, especially on the weekends, so. So I think it's still, it's still, um, you know, provides as much impact as we can without going to that full suspension as far as the off-sale. So I do agree with that. I'm, you know, I could go either way on the first violation for the on-sale because that one-day suspension is still impactful to their bottom line, uh, but I'm okay with it being two thousand as well. Other, uh, Councilmember?
Just one more thing. I, I'm sure we'll do this, but really we have to send this out with big type to all the establishments.
We've doubled your financial penalty.
Yes. This is the educational side of it that I don't want people to be surprised on.
Yeah, I think on the outside of the envelope, we should just say fines are doubling.
Yes.
No amount of product will change our mind.
All right, so we have the draft ordinance before us, and we certainly, it's been noticed, I'm assuming, has the ten days of notice. So we could take it up this evening. I do want to double-check with members of the public who might be here for this item. If there is anyone here who wishes to speak to this change in the penalty for the, uh, on and off-sale first violation for liquor compliance failure. This is a chance for folks to do that. Is there anyone here to speak to this item this evening? All right, seeing no one, uh, does council wish to take an action on this proposed ordinance?
I would like to move the ordinance as it appears in our council packet.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Etten, seconded by Councilmember Strawn. Discussion on the motion is the maker, Councilmember Etten?
No, we said enough. Thanks.
All right, as the second of Councilmember Strawn. Any other discussion on the motion? All right, I think we did cover it pretty well during our earlier discussion. Uh, with that, we've got the motion before us to approve this ordinance. Uh, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes unanimously. That ordinance is approved. We also have a request to publish, uh, a ordinance summary as opposed to publishing the whole ordinance. Excuse me, and that summary does require a supermajority, which in the case of a five-member council is four votes. Uh, is there a motion to publish a summary of this ordinance?
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Graff, seconded by Councilmember Schroder, uh, to publish a summary. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes unanimously, meeting the two-thirds majority requirement, and we can, uh, publish a summary as opposed to the full ordinance. Save the cities some dollars and the taxpayers. All right, with that then, we have, uh, our final business item, seven D, which is to consider appointments to, uh, city commissions. Two commissions specifically, we have our Public Works Environment and Transportation Commission, uh, and our Human Rights Inclusion and Engagement Commission, our three-function, or four-function commission names. Uh, we've got, once again, two vacancies on the Human Rights Inclusion and Engagement Commission. Uh, one vacancy is for term expiring in three thirty-one of twenty-four, uh, and the other is for a term, oh, wait a second. They do appear to be both the same, expiring on the same date. We'll double-check with staff in case that is an error, but I believe they're the same. I think what happened is maybe one of the vacancies occurred later, and so we kind of added it. Okay. Uh, and then once again, two vacancies on the Public Works Environment and Transportation Commission, also both expiring on three thirty-one of twenty-four. So what is the desire of the council with respect to the appointments on these commissions? Councilmember Schroder.
I would move that we would, uh, appoint the, um, top two, uh, vote-getters in both of them and, and, um, call it a day because it's, you have, um, some very, um, you know, in the first one you have, uh, five, four, and then the second one you have five, four, and it seems pretty obvious that, uh, those are the four that should be, uh, appointed to this commission. So I would move to appoint those four.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Schroder to appoint, and very specifically that is Nimit Bala and Lori Ann Williams to the Human Rights Inclusion and Engagement Commission, and Daniel Ferguson, Sarah Rudolph to the Public Works Environment and Transportation Commission, um, for the reasons outlined. It was seconded, I think, by Councilmember Strawn. Discussion on the motion is the maker, Councilmember Schroder. Anything else to add?
Nope.
All right, Councilmember Strawn?
No, I'd just like to thank everyone again for applying, and, um, I had a chance to talk with people on the phone, and sometimes that's a very different experience than seeing them in a, in the, some other place here on Cedar Home. So I just encourage and think, again, we had some very fine candidates interested, and we appreciate their willingness to step forward.
All right, any other discussion on the motion?
No.
All right, with that then, we've got the motion before us to make those appointments as outlined. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes unanimously. Those appointments are made.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry for the confusion. Um, I've, I'm looking at the RCA, it does look like one member, uh, one position I should say expires at the end of twenty twenty-five. Um, I think the tally sheet may have it wrong. It looked like, um, the, um, term for Commissioner Palmquist ended twenty twenty-four, and the, um, term for Commissioner Peju, um, ended twenty twenty-five. So I think there is a distinction there that we should probably call on who we're pointing to each one position.
All right, so why don't we do a follow-up motion specific to the Human Rights Inclusion and Engagement Commission as to which of the two appointees would be the twenty twenty-five term?
Well, I would think the, um, the top, again, I think we would go.
We, we need some clarification, maybe why don't we just pause for just a moment? One term does end on twenty twenty-five. Twenty twenty-five?
Yeah.
And that's, that's the, just for the human rights.
Just for the human rights, and then for P. Wett, they're both ending twenty-four. Sorry for the confusion. So basically, in the way it would work, under our appointment rules in terms of terms and term limits, um, if we, the person we appoint for the term that expires on twenty twenty-four would serve a little bit shorter, assuming they're appointed to two full terms after that, and the other person would serve one year longer, basically, is the distinction between those. So potentially somebody could term, could serve two full terms and two-thirds, or thereabouts of, of, no, and a year, so, yeah.
Put one name.
We just need to pick one. Councilmember Schroder, do you have an idea for?
Uh, well, originally I was going to say whoever the, you know, the, um, top, but now that you've, you clarified that, and I, um, I was thinking about that. I was originally going to say whoever got the most votes should have the longer term.
That'd still work out.
That would still.
That'd still work, yes.
That's, that's how I would look at it.
Do you want to make a motion?
So the motion then would be?
Yes, so, so we would, uh, assign the terms in relationship to how many votes that they received.
And we should clarify, these aren't votes that they've received, tallies.
Tallys, tallies.
Vote is what we're doing tonight, yeah.
Tallys.
So that would be Mr. Bala then for the, uh, twenty twenty-five appointment?
Yes.
All right, just to officially.
And Williams for the other one.
Twenty twenty-four, all right.
I second that motion.
All right, that works out extremely well. Uh, is there any discussion on that motion?
I think we've had enough discussion.
With that then, uh, we'll, uh, go right to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes unanimously. Thank you for that clarification.
Well, thank you. I apologize for that.
Nope, that's all right. That's what we get for not looking at both pieces of paper at the same time. All right, that then brings us to consideration of, uh, previous council meeting minutes. We've got the minutes from our, um, August twenty-first meeting, and then also from our August twenty-fourth meeting, which was those interviews for those candidates. Um, are there any additional changes or corrections to either of those minutes or a motion to approve one or both?
I move to approve both.
It's been moved by Councilmember Schroder, seconded by Councilmember Etten to approve both. Do we need to separate them?
I'd like to have them separated, please.
All right, so, uh, Councilmember Schroder, would you like to amend your motion to include only the twenty-first meeting?
I would.
All right, and the second was from Councilmember Etten. All right, so the mo, the first motion then is to approve the minutes of our August twenty-first regular meeting. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Any abstentions?
I was present on it.
You're present, okay, got it. So that's unanimous. All right, then on the twenty-fourth, that's right, that was the, the special meeting for the interviews. Motion to approve those minutes.
Still moved. Second.
All right, moved by Councilmember Graff, seconded by Councilmember Etten. Uh, discussion on that motion. This is once again our August twenty-fourth minutes. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Abstained.
All right, and one abstention from Councilmember Strawn. So that is passed four to zero. All right, so those minutes are approved. That then brings us to, uh, our consent agenda. Nothing's been removed, so Mr. Trudgeon, would you give us a brief introduction of those consent items?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item ten A approves payments in the amount of one million, two hundred and ninety-one thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars and fourteen cents. Item ten B approves one temporary gambling permit and five THC retail licenses. Agenda item ten C approves the purchase of a new moor for the Parks and Recreation Department. The current moor will be traded in to reduce the purchase price. Item ten D approves a short-term rental license renewal for nineteen oh-one Shady Beach Avenue. Agenda item ten E approves a short-term rental license renewal for twelve seventy-seven Garden Avenue. Item ten F approves a twenty twenty-four insurance benefit renewal and city cafeteria contributions. I would note that the city did receive a five percent increase, uh, which is consistent with what is included in the twenty twenty-four proposed budget. We're very grateful for that. Item ten G adopts a resolution approving the final plat and public improvement contract for Villas of Reservoir Woods. Item, uh, ten H approves a three-year audit services agreement with Redpath and Company, LLC. And then finally, agenda item ten I authorizes staff to apply for a community crime intervention and prevention grant to fund the city's housing navigator position, and that is the consent agenda.
All right, thank you, Mr. Trudgeon. Is there a motion as it relates to the consent agenda items A through I?
Still moved. Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Graff, seconded by Councilmember Etten. Any discussion on the motion, Councilmember Strawn?
I do have a question regarding, uh, ten I. Do we have a timeline for when we will hear on that grant application?
I think, I know the deadline was coming up in later September. We hope to hear, uh, hopefully this fall. If you recall, I'm funding that part of the twenty twenty-four budget through opioid, uh, dollars. If we were to get this grant, which would be wonderful, we would use this grant dollars instead of.
Okay, thank you. That was my follow-up.
And just to clarify, opioid settlement dollars.
Settlement dollars, yes.
From that, from that legal action.
Not from our sale.
Exactly. I just wanted to be clear about that. All right, we've got the motion before us then to approve those consent items, and it's been seconded. Uh, any further discussion? All right, I just wanted to note appreciation to the staff on the item related to the audit services for incorporating some of the suggestions from the council in terms of how to report on our contracts for services. Appreciate that very much. With that, we've got the motion before us. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes unanimously, and those items are approved. That brings us then to review of the future agendas, and we'll turn it back over to Mr. Trudgeon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, our next, uh, meeting is next Monday. We do have an EDA, uh, meeting, and pretty straightforward, just the EDA budget approval, something you saw previously in July. So we're asking the City Council, acting as the EDA, to make a recommendation to the City Council, um, for future consideration for not to exceed. So that'll be pretty straightforward. Certainly we'll be able to answer any questions you have about the budget. We did have one other agenda item we thought we might have on there, but that was removed, uh, for a later date. So during the work session, uh, we only had two items. I had hoped to have the classification and compensation, um, report back. We spent a lot of time on Friday going over it, just not ready, uh, to be, um, presented yet, so I moved that to the September twenty-fifth meeting. So I do want that in your consideration for the not-to-exceed budget. So my apologies, but this isn't ready. Uh, we don't even have good firm numbers yet. We're getting really close, but, um, just don't have. We made some tweaks, I guess, is the point, uh, we met on Friday. So, uh, we have two items. We have the Finance Commission recommendation on the budget. Um, they are meeting, I believe, tomorrow night, um, for the, uh, final look. I did go to the Finance Commission in August and presented the budget, and they asked some questions, and they talked about it then. But now they're going to formulate their, um, recommendation to you, and we'll come and report back to you on next Monday. And then we'll have a presentation for MINDOT staff about the Highway Thirty-six project that they are planning to do in the next couple of years. On the twenty-fifth, the main items are the classification and compensation study and the preliminary budget, budget and levy. On the ninth, we talked about this earlier, we have liquor compliance failures. I think the number was seven. We had a couple tobacco compliance failures, which were less than that, but still, um, had violations across the board there. So, uh, we'll be bringing those forward. As you know, uh, there is little, um, it takes some time to work through each one individually, and it takes a lot of effort, um, by our PD staff to get all the paperwork and all that stuff going. So that's why it's taking a little bit longer because of the amount of violations, but we'll be bringing that forward. And, um, the ordinance we pass tonight will be in effect as far as any violations, so. And then on the, uh, sixteenth of October, it'll be more of a work session. The, uh, Planning Commission is coming, um, uh, planning to come forward for just their annual joint meeting. Um, I, I think maybe, and we can talk, uh, offline, Councilmember Etten, if you had gotten any information from other commissions, but I know they're gearing up. I think most commissions are wrapping up their work on commission scope and duties, and how we best want to package that and have a conversation. And that could be another conversation, but, uh, among other things, that's one thing we'll talk about. We want to have an envisioned Roosevelt update, and kind of as we're wrapping that up. Also want to talk about, uh, Rose Fest activities and the, uh, capital upgrades to Rosebrook Park as well. Start talking about, uh, what might be some possibilities there. So, uh, that's what we have right now for agenda items.
All right, thank you, Mr. Trudgeon. Are there any questions on upcoming agenda, uh, Councilmember Strawn?
Um, I had a number, um, having been gone or meant to. Um, do we have an estimate on, we're going to get the, uh, short-term rental consideration back?
Um, yes. Let's see, go to the next page here. We have it on October twenty-third, so it's just off the screen there, so.
Okay. And will we be, um, entertaining any THC failures?
No, we have not done any, um, compliance checks at this point.
Okay. Okay, and then I have a agenda item.
Are there any other questions on the, uh, s, future agenda so far as it's been outlined? All right, Councilmember Strawn, question, or a future agenda item?
Uh, yes, I believe that we should bring forward for council consideration, um, the Student Resource Officer Contract with the school district and for discussion, um, as a, a very thorough, all-sides-considered, um, process, so we know where we are headed. And I think time is of the essence as far as the school district is concerned, so hopefully that can be done with some expediency.
So the normal process for a future agenda item would be to have it on for next meeting in Section Eight to have guidance from the council, um, to, as to how to do it. Is there any desire on the part of the council to bypass that process and go ahead and put it on, uh, uh, an agenda without that step?
I would think that we could, I know that, uh, our city attorney will be absent, so that is maybe our primary consideration. Will you be back about that time, two weeks from now?
I will.
Okay, so maybe we could consider putting it on the agenda in two weeks when she is here, so we have her guidance and counsel.
So we can either have a discussion next week as to whether, whether we do that, or we can, we can, if the council, if there's no objection, we could just put it on for the twenty-fifth. Is there any objection to putting it on for the twenty-fifth? Councilmember Brad?
My question is how much more we're going to know. Certainly, we had a flurry of information over the weekend. Things to keep, seem to keep shifting, and so I don't want to prejudge this and move too fast. Um, we have, I think one of the concerns with this is that the state legislature didn't take their time to talk to the people who were affected by it, whether it's teachers, schools, cities, police departments. So I don't want us to jump in the same situat, in the same way. So if our city attorney comes back and says, hey, yeah, we'll be ready to have a robust discussion on the twenty, that's fine. But if she says, I don't know how we can have all this and have that really robust discussion, then I don't want to push it unnecessarily.
You want to tentatively talk about it on the twenty-fifth? And then if that needs to change based on what is able to be accomplished by staff and the attorney by that time, we make an adjustment to the ninth? Does that work as a tentative plan, or do you want to have that discussion on, at our next meeting?
I think we have a process, right?
Well, that, that's the thing. I, I'm, I'm providing the opportunity to bypass the process, um, if the council so desires. But it kind of sounds like we are starting, we are starting to have the process that we would otherwise have on the eighth. So perhaps we should just, uh, just go with the process.
I agree with that.
Fair enough.
And the process is to bring it back next.
Next week, we'll have a council discussion in Section Eight of the agenda about it, yep. And to the extent there's any more information we'll have at that point, we can have it, all right? Between now and when the, uh, the plane takes off for our journey. All right.
We'll just call her.
Yeah, just zoom in, right?
Middle of the night.
That concludes our agenda except for.
I just, I just need clarification. Are we, next meeting, we're talking about putting on a future agenda?
Correct.
Okay, we're not talking about.
It's the normal process. The council has, has elected not to bypass the normal process.
Okay, I understand.
All right, any other, uh, liaison reports, agenda report, or, uh, agenda items, uh, announcements, anything like that from councilmembers?
You can tell it's a short meeting, you're just like looking for someone to say something.
We have, we, we have scheduled ourselves until seven twenty-five. We've got a whole other, more than a half hour to do announcements.
Captain on court coming up.
Yeah, on the twenty-second, Friday the twenty-second, tickets are available.
Yeah.
I was just going to actually report, uh, the, we do, uh, every two months, I think it is, we do a mayor and city manager meeting for a number of the northern, or the sort of the, the southwestern Ramsey County mayors and city managers in suburbs. And today's, uh, there was a lot of discussion at that meeting about, uh, THC and cannabis regulation, oddly enough, uh, and SROs, oddly enough. So, uh, that was kind of an interesting, uh, discussion, and everybody was looking to everybody else to set the example. So that's, that's my report on that. Anything else from councilmembers this evening? Otherwise, we, uh, can adjourn because that's the only thing left on the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember, uh, Councilmember Atten. I'd almost gone to call you Councilmember Graff, seconded by Councilmember Strawn, to adjourn at six forty, six fifty-two. No more, no discussion on motion to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That passes unanimously, and we are adjourned at six forty-two. Thanks, everyone.